Meeting on Zoom, we have before us on the agenda, the approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes for December 10th, 2020. Public comment, public hearings. Item number one, Williams Auto Sales and Repair Plenary Site Plan Review Application. Then we have pending applications, item number one. Williams Auto Sales and Repair Plenary Site Plan Review Application. Item number two is Arundel to Keep Preliminary Subdivision Application. With discussion related to another possible, possible design. Then there are two land use ordinance discussions. Item, item number one is design suitability and land carrying capacity as factors in determining subdivision compliance with approval criteria. Item number two is proposed revisions to the residential growth ordinance. Then there is other business and then we will adjourn.
We do a roll call.
I do a roll call, we have Susan Roth, Roger Moran, Jens Bergen, Marty Kane, and I'm Rich Genong, the chairman, so we have a quorum. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Jens, you are blocked, you are muted.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded by, made by Susan, seconded by Roger. Marty, you are also muted. Is there any discussion about the motion to approve the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor, Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Marty is waving, so he, he. Jens?
Aye.
It is unanimous. And we have approval of the minutes for December 10th, 2020. Does anybody have any questions or comments on the meeting?
Am I unmuted?
You are Marty, thank you very much. Okay, hearing no comment, if someone would make a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Susan, seconded by Roger. Any discussion? All those in favor, Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
Marty?
Yay.
Jens?
Aye.
It is unanimous. We will now move into public comment. And a reminder, public comment is designed for members of the public that, that wish to comment on items that are not on the agenda. If you, if you wish to comment, please either raise your hand or raise your hand through, through Zoom and we will proceed forward. Yes, Mr. Labonte, you are muted, ah, there you go.
Yeah, so you say items not on the agenda, so I always had some concerns about the growth permit applications. So is that something that we can publicly comment on tonight, or is that something?
Yes, yeah, we're gonna have a discussion about it. We, we had the public hearing. And now we're gonna look at, at the discussion about how we go about resolving that issue.
Okay, so I kind of missed the public hearing, because I kind of just learned about this last week. Is there something I can comment on now, is that something that has to be tabled?
You'll have to wait until we get to the growth ordinance.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Come back later.
Hopefully, hopefully not too much later.
Yes.
Are there any other comments from the public? Hearing then, hearing none, I will close the public comment, we will move on to public hearings. Public hearings for Williams Auto Sales and Repair Plenary Site Plan Review Application, a determination of completeness which has been done. They proposed auto sales and repair facility consisting of a 2,400 square foot building and 27 space parking lot on point eight acre lot containing a single family home at 660 Alfred Road. Tax map for lot 39 in the Alfred Road Business District. Lester Williams is the owner applicant and Peter Beagle of Land Design Solutions is the applicant's agent. And why do I have the feeling that it's Peter Beagle and not Peter Beagle?
Uh, Peter Beagle it is, you got that right.
Oh, I got lucky the first time, I should have been happy. Okay, this is the public hearing, if the public has any questions for Mr. Beagle or for Mr. Williams who is joining us by iPhone, now is the time to ask them. And seeing no raised hands or comments being made at 7:21, I will close the public hearing. We will move right into the pending applications. The first item is Williams Auto Sales and Repair, a Plenary Site Plan Review. And I'm not going to read through all of the same stuff that I just read about what it consists of. Does the planning board have any comments? For Mr. Williams or for Mr. Beagle?
Yes.
Yes Marty, go ahead.
Uh, it said it was point eight acres. They said in the prior discoveries or whatever, have they resolved that to be any bigger, or is it the same?
I believe that the size will remain the same and the property line should remain the same. The deed is still working its way through the process, it's one step closer. My understanding is everybody that needed to sign off on it has signed off on it. And now the deed is, people signed off on the fact that they would sign off on it being changed. So now it's in the stage of it's actually being signed off to be changed. So we're very close to the finish line on that. But the size that you see on the plant represented on the plan should be the, the end size, those lines should all be as they are shown.
Wait, I'm a little confused, so was signed off, everybody signed off that the change should be made to the title? And then everybody signed off that the change should be made, so?
So then the change has to be made and the representative needs to sign that.
The representative being?
Representative of the, of, of the previous owner.
Oh.
So everybody on that group signed off that the change should be made and now the change has been made and the, the representative of the previous owner is signing off.
And once, once they sign off, you'll have a clean, a clean title?
Yes.
So, just to be clear, so who is that group? I understand who the representative is. So everybody in that group has signed off and now you're waiting for the previous owner's representative to sign, but who's that group?
I could, I could probably help explain it a little better. Um, it was, um, the executors of the estate of Viola Knoll. And what had happened is, is after their passing, the executors of the estate sold the property with the way that it was deeded before and they didn't do a deed correction after the land was conveyed in 89. So we had to get the corrected deed and survey signed off, which was already in place, just never recorded in the deeds. So now the executors, which were three to that estate, have signed off. And now the corrected deed has gone to Massachusetts earlier this week, actually. So we're, we're, we're expecting the, the updated deed, all done and complete, sent back to us by the end of the week, so probably within the next couple of weeks. How my luck has been, I would think that we're, we're good to go as far as that.
And that was the previous owner's representative that you're waiting for to sign off?
It was, it was the, it was the owners of the estate that, that was passed a few owners ago, but it was never picked up until we were looking to do something on the property. And we found that there was an issue between the deed and the survey that we had provided.
So is it, does that mean it's basically a done deal and, and, or is there any, okay?
Yeah, no, there's no objections to the deeds or anything like that, it was a technical error that has been corrected.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know, I got confused with all the pronouns and stuff like that.
To, to be honest, I, I still don't completely understand them all, I know is we're getting close.
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
Question for Les, Les, so this does not involve a probate judge or probate court at all anymore, right?
The probate judge that was involved has already made his decision and signed off and we got the okay. So that was, that was after we got her signatures. So the next step was to make the corrective deed, which has been sent out. So the only thing that we were lacking, which could have already been done was the, uh, the final representative signature that everyone elected to, to sign off. So it didn't have to get bounced around.
Any other questions for the applicant or his agent?
So is it kosher to, uh, let this thing go to its final stages and approve it without having everything signed, sealed and delivered?
It is a condition of approval.
Okay.
That is recorded in the, the findings of fact that we got this afternoon.
Okay, as long as you do that, I'm good.
That'll be the fact, yeah, I was gonna say, that's the fact of the recording of the, of the corrective instrument, right?
That's correct, yep.
That's the only condition, yeah.
Item number two, he can't get a building permit until he, until he shows Tad and the code enforcement officer a, a corrective deed that's been recorded in your county.
Question.
Yeah, Marty.
What is being corrected if the lot size is not being changed?
Well, actually, the, the, the deed, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Peter or Les. I believe the previous, the, the way the deed had been written, it had point three nine acres. When it's actually supposed to be point seven eight nine acres, is that not?
There's a scribbles there?
Yeah.
That's correct. What had happened is, is, uh, from, from my understanding was that Viola Knoll and her husband had these different pieces of land that surrounding my property. And there was five or so different lots that they put together and sold and they conveyed their own portion of that land. And it was done somewhere around 89. And what had happened is after they got that taken care of, they never went to the deeds court and recorded it. So it was done, they had their, they had their land, they, but it, somewhere along the lines, it slipped through the cracks and nobody has taken the blame for it. But throughout the years, it had never been caught. So the land was always, always, the, the land was always the same since they conveyed it over. However, it just never, they, they never recorded it after they finalized everything. So they actually had the survey, they had all the, everything that was done correctly minus the fact they never recorded it. And after it was through a probate, to get that reversed was ju- just about an act of Congress, we've, we've been, we, uh, we've been attempting since August.
Yes, but where did the point five acres go? One point three and point eight?
I think he said it was a clerical error, Marty.
Yes, well, it was one of the lots that was originally broken up was point five acres and that was the lot that they kept. And they kept a small portion of that, but one of the other lots to make their lot bigger. And it got surveyed and, and went forward as far as that, they just never recorded it on, at the deeds.
Okay, any other questions for the, for the applicant or his agent? Okay. Hearing none, findings of fact and approval. Uh, Lester Williams Auto Sales and Repair Facility. Whereas on November 12th, 2020, the Arundel Planning Board received a plenary site plan submission from Lester Williams to construct an auto repair and sales facility consisting of a 2,400 square foot building and 27 space parking lot on a point eight acre plus or minus lot containing a single family home at 660 Alfred Road Tax Map for Lot 39 in the Alfred Road Business District. Lester Williams is the owner applicant and Peter Beagle, LLA of Land Design Solutions is the applicant's agent. Whereas on November 14th, 2020, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a site walk of the property. Whereas on December 10th, 2020, the Arundel Planning Board reviewed several amendments to the site plan, determined the site application complete and scheduled a public hearing on January 5th, 2021. Whereas on January 5th, 2021, the Arundel Planning Board conducted a public hearing of the project in accordance with section 10.6.3.3 of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance. And whereas on January 5th, 2021, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the following findings of fact and notice of decision. Findings of fact, number one, the existing property owners are Jessica and Lester Williams Jr. and the applicant is Lester Williams Jr. Number two, the property is located at 660 Alfred Road Tax Map for Lot 39 in the Alfred Road Business District. Number three, Lot 39 is a legally non-conforming lot of point three nine acres that will be legally expanded to point seven eight nine acres after filing a corrective deed sanctioned by the probate court. Number four, the lot currently contains an existing residence built in 1964 and remodeled in 2013 and 2019 with an outdoor deck and swimming pool. In addition to maintaining the resident, the applicant proposes to operate an auto repair shop and outdoor auto sales, both of which are permitted uses in the AR district. Number five, in support of the automobile repair and sales operation, the applicant proposes to construct a 2,400 square foot commercial building to the east of the existing residence containing four automobile lifts used to repair and remodel and then sell performance automobiles. Number six, access to the property shall be via an existing 18 foot plus or minus driveway from an existing 32 foot curb cut on Alfred Road. The applicant has received an MDOT driveway entrance permit dated November 3rd, 2020, an MDOT driveway, driveway highway entrance permit waiver to reduce driveway separation distance to 142 feet in an easterly direction and a mobility arterial waiver fro- from MDOT Region 1 for 467 feet in an easterly direction. Tad, there's a typo here, because it's, it says form and not from. Unless I mistaken it in number six. Number seven, a six vehicle this, display parking lot will be located along the eastern property line and in front of the proposed repair facility with an additional two parking spaces located to the west of the driveway entrance. The existing family parking area to the north will be eliminated. Customer, employee and additional display space shall be provided to the west of the proposed repair facility by a 13 space paved parking lot. One handicapped parking space will be provided with 75 feet, within 75 feet of the repair ma- facility entrance. Number eight, the proposed site layout conforms to the space and bulk requirements of Land Use Ordinance Section 6.7.3. Number nine, the repair facility along with the residence will be serviced by a replacement and expansion of the existing onsite septic system as documented in an HHE 200 and HHE 234 prepared by Mark Hampton, LSE and dated November 2nd, 2020. Water service will be provided by an onsite well. Electric telephone and cable service will be delivered to the new facility, the underground conduit extending from the existing house. Number 10, additional site lighting shall be provided by three shielded LED wall packs over bay and entrance doors and meets the requirement of Land Use Ordinance Section 5.10.4.3. Number 11, the applicant has devised a stormwater management plan prepared by Site Design Associates consisting of drip edges along the perimeter of the proposed repair facility, rain garden detention area and grass swale containment of runoff from the customer parking lot, all discharging into the drainage system of Alfred Road. There will be minimal increase in peak runoff from the site and MDOT has granted the applicant a drainage easement to accept such runoff discharge. Number 12, the applicant has submitted an erosion control plan that is suitable for the proposed activities. Number 13, buffering and landscaping. The applicant proposes to buffer the boundary between the new facility and the residential property to the east by a combination of seven Siberian spruce and a six foot high black vinyl coated chain link fence with privacy slat. The applicant has submitted a letter from Daniel Mason, the abutting residential neighbor to the east, approving the proposed buffering strategy. Four accolade cherry trees will be installed along the street from the front of the property in compliance with Land Use Section 5.9.6. Number 14, the applicant has submitted a site development cost estimate of $49,000. Number 15.
99, 99,000.
No, 49,000.
Um, the total estimate is 99,775 dollars. The site work cost, we've estimated at 39,195 dollars. Um, I think in my, I had a couple of back and forth with Tad just before the meeting started about whether we needed to include a 10% contingency. Uh, we were hoping to, uh, talk about this with, with you folks. We'd, um, we tried to keep our, our site development number as, as low as possible, as that's also less as working capital. Um, and going through our numbers, we believe that the, the site costs would be the 39,195 dollars.
And what about the 12,000 for the drip edge and, and the rest of that you just sent to me?
Well, I, I included that, what I didn't in, so I included the stormwater drip line filter and rain garden for 2000. The 4,000 for landscaping, tree shrub, grass plantings and chain link fence. 500 for the erosion control. 19,000 for the paving, uh, two inch base course and a one inch surface course. Uh, 1,695 dollars for the loam and seed. Uh, 12,000 dollars for the, um, the, uh, the buildup for the gravel, for the parking, for the parking areas and the drip line filter. What I include was I did not include electrical, electrical work. And I did not include sewer water, sewer and water. Um, thinking that the site work that the performance guarantee would cover would be if Les left town, uh, what would need to be cleaned up or, or put to, put back together. So that's, that was the way we were looking at this and, and figuring it.
So the 99,775 is the total of everything but the electrical and the things that you excluded?
The 99,775 includes everything, it includes the metal building, it includes all the electrical, includes everything.
Okay.
The 39,195 does, does not include the building. It doesn't include the building foundation and slab, it doesn't include the lights that go on the building. Or the electrical and wiring, the, the building up. Um, and it doesn't include the sewer and water lines, um, running to the building.
I'm afraid that's part of the site development there, Peter. I, I came up with that, that total minus the, um, the, uh, foundation work, the frost wall and the, and the slab, and I came up with 48,475 and up to, uh, just 49, rounded it up to 49. Now, we could do, if the concern is, and I understand the concern about that's working capital, what we can do is we can do what's called a tri-party agreement in which, um, the bank holds the money. We don't hold, I don't want to hold the money, I don't want to do 1099s. So, um, the bank holds the money and, uh, the bank will not release the money to Peter's contractor uh, without my signature. And basically what I do is verify that the work's been done and then Peter can pay, then the, the bank can pay the contractor or the bank can give Peter the money to pay the contractor, or Peter, yeah, give, um, Les the money to pay the contractor, that's one way of doing it.
Could I add something?
Sure.
A lot, a lot of this project I'm gonna be paying out of my pocket and that's how I, that's how I plan for everything and um, I, I have a lot of friends that are in the business that are gonna help me through this, so my resources are what are gonna help me through. Um, as far as the paving and concrete is concerned, I have a, a good relationship with Dana over at Dayton Santa Gravel and Rusty and a lot of this, um, you know, with having other friends, you know, help me through the process with the excavation work or what have you, is that the fact that I have liquid, liquid money that I can, I can pay them when, when they're requiring to get all this done. Um, so what my concern is, is that I get to a point where somebody that may have given me a, a price in consideration that I was gonna be paying them quickly with cash that they might, you know, want to get a little more now because we have to wait for a process before I can, uh, allow them to get paid.
Well, one of the problems here, uh, Les, is that, that what the planning board is, the planning board has to determine you have the technical and financial capability to complete the project. And that's why we have, that's why we have the bonding and if, if you're telling me you're depending on trades, that's, that's all if you, planning board.
I have the cash to do it and I can, I can prove that.
Can that be, uh, can?
I do have the cash in a separate account. And even with the 39,000, I could put that in an account and it would still leave me liquid enough to pay my friends and pay all, everyone else, like, I mean, you know, Dayton Santa Gravel, um, they're a professional company and Dana said that he would give you whatever you needed notice. Um, he says that he's worked with you guys before on that. But the fact of me being able to write them a check and pay them immediately uh, holds, you know, in, a, a better, a, a better outcome for me. So we're, we're planning, uh, you know, all the, all the, the control or, or my, what we're doing that would impact you guys would be around that 39,000 if, if something was to fall through. That I could, I could assure you guys that we had.
What's the board's pleasure on this?
Like, I think first off, we have to resolve the, the difference of the 39,000 or the 49,000 that's in the findings of fact.
Well, Mr. Chairman, can we, uh, if the applicant has the capacity to prove that, you know, to show the board he has those resources, uh, can we make that a condition of approval to work with the lower number on, on proof of that to, to Tad?
I could, I could put that money in, in an account and, and show you guys that I have, that whatever, however, it would, uh, it would take to satisfy you. I could even show you that I have the money to complete the project. Um, I have more than enough money to complete the project, but I, I want to keep it liquid because that is what's gonna help me through the project because I would like to use as much resource as I have available.
Mr. Chairman, it, it seems to me that, uh, if we have some kind of documentation to that effect, that should give us some comfort. Whereas simply relying on, uh, you know, assertions that he's got good, good, you know, contractual relations with third party vendors is probably not something we should be relying on. But I'm hearing that he can show documentation of the financial strength. Let's, if he can do it, let's rely on that.
I agree.
I, I don't have a problem relying on that and please, Mr. Williams, don't take this the wrong way. But there's nothing to stop Mr. Williams from putting 39,000 dollars in the bank, showing Ted that he's got 39K in the bank and then taking it out. That kind of defeats the purpose.
Uh, yeah, I know, but I think our concern, concern mostly.
I, I have no problem.
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
He went dead.
I'm sorry, I, I, I lost you for a second, I have about 10 seconds back.
I think we spoke over each other, that's what, that was what the problem was.
Yeah, I'm back, I, I didn't, I didn't catch the last 10 seconds or so. Yeah, I'm back. I, I didn't, I didn't catch the last 10 seconds or so.
No, it was just, you cut off when you said, you, you started to say something about you have.
Oh, I didn't, I, I, I had already planned on putting, um, around thirty. It was originally around thirty-six that I planned on putting in an account for an assurance for you guys, um, which I still have no problem doing. Um, what I was trying to avoid was going over that portion because it would leave me unable to be liquid.
So Jens, I have a question for you. Um, as a real estate attorney, so can you set up an escrow account where the funds would be pretty liquid that he could draw down on that, um, as needed or with a cosigner? Right, Tad, or I don't know, I don't know how you do that. So the town knows that that money is going to be held for this particular project, but yet give Les the liquidity that he needs to be able to pay these subs as they complete their portion of the project?
I think the answer to that is yes, but it depends on whether the town wants to get into that kind of relationship. And with, whether Ted would be comfortable uh, with that, with that kind of a relationship. And for that matter, with a less one.
Well, like, like I was saying anyhow, I have no problem putting, you know, uh, uh, around the thirty-nine thousand in a, in an account for you guys to sign off on once I do meet those performance assurances that, that you guys want to see. I have no problem locking up that, that money. It was the money for the whole project that I want to keep liquid. Um, I was able to negotiate three thousand off of my building the other day for quick payment. It, that wouldn't, I wouldn't have been able to do anything like that had I not been able to have the funds immediately to drop a deposit.
Rich, uh, I think, uh, uh, Les and I were speaking over one another before, but I sort of inquired, you know, isn't our concern mostly with applicants who don't have the resources? Uh, as opposed to those who do? And I mean, I, I hear your, your sort of, uh, suggestion of, well, what if the money just goes in and goes out and is not near the, near, uh, there when it's needed? I mean, that's, uh,
I, I think it's, I think it's a combination of both. I think one, we want to make sure that people have the financial resources to be able to do it. And two, we want to make sure that if something goes wrong, that those, those resources are available to finish the project or to, or to mitigate whatever it was that was done. And that, that's the purpose of providing the, a bond or an account that says, okay, here's this money. If we have to hire somebody to fix the problem.
We're not going to do that.
You know, we're not going to do that. Here's the thing though, I think, I think we're, we're talking about, uh, I mean, these concerns I think are more pertinent to, you know, large subdivision type arrangements where, you know, significant i- impact on, uh, you know, large, uh, a parcel of land and neighbors and that kind of thing. I mean, we're dealing with a, uh, with a pretty small project here on land that the applicant makes his own home at. I mean, I mean, it, it doesn't seem to me that we're, I think we're sort of, uh, looking at something that is a bit overkill, given the relatively small scope of this project.
But I, I think the, I think the problem comes in that if we treat one applicant one way and another applicant in a different way. If we say the less, you don't have to give us this money, uh, you know, because it's such a small project. What do we do with the big contractor who, who comes in, who should give us money? And then he says, yeah, but you're letting all of these other people slide. I, I at the level playing field.
That the answer to that
Well, I think that
I mean, we're, we're, we are a quasi judicial body. We, we have some discretion. Otherwise, we, they don't need us. They can set this up on a computer system. Really? You know, uh, uh, it seems to me, I mean, we, I think we, we do have some ability to look at a situation and, and make some judgment calls. And on this one, I think giving us the, this, this, the small size of the project, I think it would be appropriate. If, if
To the chair.
Hang on for a second, Marty.
Showing the capacity.
Okay. Yeah, Marty.
Through the chair. What we're speaking of at the thirty-nine thousand is basically infrastructure and everything else. It's not the building. The building is on the outside. If he does all the infrastructure and doesn't get the building, the infrastructure is still always there.
I, I, I agree.
This is where I'm coming at as a business person also, thinking of it this way. I mean, the, making sure that the infrastructure is done so it's not leaving anything else undone. The building itself is the main part of it, but that covers the total end of it. But if the infrastructure is always done, the building can always come later if it needed to be under a bad situ- situation.
Okay. Ted, you were going to say something?
No, I was, I was just going to say, I, um, yeah, the, the planning board does have some, some leeway in the ordinance under ten, seven, one. Um, if we read that, it says, uh, that the, to ensure that all the terms and conditions accompany any issuance of a plenary cycling review approval are met pursuant to all sections of the zoning orders, blah, blah, blah. The applicant should submit a fully executed performance assurances uh, to the planning board prior to the issuance of building permits, CL or commencement of the approval activity. And it says the elements of the performance assurance are the required improvements, the construction schedule and the performance assurance amount, including inspection fees and contingency of fifteen percent. It says based on the determination in section ten, seven, one, the, the planning board, uh, um, may require the applicant, may require the applicant to guarantee completion of the requirement and improvements by one of the following methods. Escrow, which I don't think we're talking about here. Um, letter of credit, which the applicant is, is, is not talking about either. Tri-party agreement, which is basically the banks, the escrow. So Les is talking about putting in an account, okay? The account means it's in a bank. How he pulls the money out to, to deal with what's Rich is talking about, he's concerned about is somebody could, he, Les could go in and just empty the whole account. The other thing would be the, um, with a tri-party agreement, the money's not re- released unless I sign off on it. So I'm a kind of a cosigner on this. Saying that basically, yeah, he completed this and this and this, and he, I just send the, the, the bank a letter to release the money.
Through the chair.
For whatever amounts, you know.
Do that the same thing as you do on some of the bigger projects, Ted?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm doing on the big projects, I'm doing on smaller projects. For instance, I did Ontario.
Uh, that's what I'm saying.
Doing them both. It all depends on how the planning, but the planning board has the discretion in this situation. If you want me to, you want to just have a surety of a certain nominal amount that I don't release till the end of the project or till the, the end of the project, we could do that. It's up to the board. How you want to do this?
Well, Les, was that what you were talking about is, is, you know, putting thirty-nine thousand in an account and leaving it there until the job is done?
I, I was, I was hoping to have it in there and then once we got to the portion where somebody needed to get paid, I had the liquid to take care of them, but then I could go through that process of having Ted sign off and send the letter and, you know, then them releasing the funds so I can replenish my account. But it would give me the ability to write a check to a contractor when they're done and satisfy him so he can keep rolling. And then I don't have to wait for the process of getting a, a, a letter notified or, or sign off or anything like that. So it would still have the money available that you guys are looking for until Ted was to sign off on it. But it wouldn't leave me in a position where I was waiting to get it signed off so I could satisfy a contractor.
Right. So you're, you're essentially going to take it out of your pocket, then go to the bank and put it back into your pocket.
Correct. So basically as we would be signed off, if we said, all right, this project has been completed. Um, now I will allow you to release that eight thousand dollars or whatever the case, I would be able to go to the bank with his signature and pull out that eight thousand dollars and either put the money back in my pocket or back in my account.
Right. And I, and, and, you know, that's, I think that's what, what, uh, the tri-party agreement does. You know, with, the, the way, the way Ted said it originally is that you would, you would, they would go to the, to the bank and say, we want to get paid for this. And the bank would end up releasing the money. In this case, you would pay them directly and then you would go to the bank and, and say, I need the money. And Ted would, would sign off and release it back to you.
Right.
Correct.
The tri-party agreement is, is actually they're going to give the money to him. I, I, they're not a lot of banks that want to play bill pay. Um, that's not a service they want to do anymore. So in that particular case, they just released the money to him, to, to.
So I have a, I have a quick question just to, um, given Jason just asked a question and I don't disagree. Should we, um, take this discussion offline, uh, and try to figure out a way to uh, protect, uh, Arundel, not that we need protecting from Les, but just to have a precedent that is consistent with everything else that we've done and what we want to do going forward and figure out a way that he can put the money aside and feel protected and he can be liquid, but not continue on for the next, you know, period of time in the meeting to get it sorted out?
Uh, well, you're going to have to do a findings effect and approve it. You're going to have to vote on what's in the findings of fact. You don't want to leave anything lying, hanging out in the air.
Um, I, I have a thought. Um, so the, the Les doesn't seem to have a problem with the tri-party agreement. The, the issue is the amount that's in there because the more money that's in the bank, the less money is in Les's pocket to pay these folks initially. So it seems like Les has been saying he's all right with that, that thirty-six, the thirty-nine number. But when you get up to the, the forty-nine or, uh, farther up the ladder, then that's leaves him less to be dealing with these contractors. So that, I, I, I'm thinking unless, correct me if I'm wrong, that that's kind of, uh, the, the sticking point for, uh, for him. Um, is just how much money does he need to put in the tri-party agreement? Um, and so, you know, if you, depending on what you add up there, um, that, you know, determines the, the funds in there.
Well, in, in my opinion, almost fifty percent of the total cost of the project is more than enough to hold in a, in a, uh, an account that, uh, is protected.
Well, let's, let's discuss, let's discuss the number that we're going to work on. Is it, is it going to be thirty-nine or is it going to be forty-nine? Or is it going to be some number in between?
Well, if you want to do thirty-nine, then Les has to understand I'm going to have to sit on the, the last chunk of that until the project's done.
But the thirty-nine, I'm, I'm fine with that. And, and it's, as long as when we go through and I, you know, we complete a task that you would have, uh, released that portion of the funds.
Yeah, but I'm go, I'm going to have to have some amount left at the end that let's say you, you, you're doing a, uh, putting in the landscaping or putting in the slats in the, in the fence. I'm going to make sure that's done. So I've got to have some, some money that's left in that account that isn't released to you until the very end.
Yeah, but how, how it's broken up right now, we have an allocated amount for the, the landscape. We have an allocated amount for everything else. So once that project, that specific project is complete, I, I wouldn't imagine that there would be an issue of releasing that portion of the funds, correct?
Well, yeah, if we, if we do it the way that you're talking about, then what I'm going to put down is I'm not going to pay out of that for the electrical conduit. I'm not going to pay for a number of different things here. I mean, when I say I'm not going to pay, I'm not going to release the funds for those. Uh, I'm going to release the funds only for completion of specific items on the, uh, on the list.
Right.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, and I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right. Then we could do a tri-party with a specific budget that will be based on this. Based on what Peter gave for a, uh, for a, uh, cost estimate.
Which was thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine, one ninety-five.
Thirty-nine, one ninety-five. Okay.
And I think in an, in an email to Ted, I, uh, listed out what those were so that he would, he would have, um,
Did you just send me that email?
Uh, just, just before seven o'clock.
Okay. That's why I haven't seen it.
Yeah, but I, I can, I can resend that, but that, that
I, I don't have my email open.
Okay.
Let me open it right now.
And I'm, I'm going to continue on at number fourteen.
All right, make it thirty-nine, one ninety-five. I see it's site work, twelve, loam seed, paving, erosion control. It's, yeah.
Okay. So the applicant has submitted a site development cost estimate of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Number fifteen, plan set documentation provided by the applicant includes a boundary survey prepared by Wayne Desper, PLS, dated October 12th, two thousand twenty, and existing conditions and demolition plan, a site plan, a grading drainage and erosion control plan, a landscape and lighting plan, site details and a free and post-development drainage plan pit, prepared by Peter Beagle, LLS, dated October, two thousand twenty, with revisions to November 23rd, two thousand twenty.
That's LLA. That's a mistake. Right, Peter?
Uh, pardon me?
You're an LLA, aren't you?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, you're an MLS.
Okay.
Got it. Okay.
There, there were two plan revisions that I noticed, uh, that I would, uh, correct on the final Mylar that I submit. Can we account for those? Uh, one is, there was a discrepancy on the landscape plan. I called the fence a five foot height.
And on the I changed it here to six foot.
So that would be six feet. And then on the site plan, I also listed the height of the building as twenty plus or minus feet tall. And we'd like to have that, uh, twenty-four plus or minus feet tall. I think Les would like more of a, uh, concrete kicker wall or whatever along the base. Uh, so we'd be, so that would be increasing that height. Um, it's still
I'm sorry, I, 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 so much going on so fast. We actually took two feet out of the top of the building. Um, and now the, uh, the concrete's going to go up two feet and then, um, a fourteen foot eve, which will give us a sixteen foot ceiling. I don't know what the overall height would be, but on a, on a one, uh, it's a two twelve pitch.
Is it under thirty feet?
Pardon me?
Is it under fifty?
Yep.
Yes, it is under fifty feet.
Yes, we're way under, we're way
By quite a bit.
A loud limit for building height.
Then I wouldn't worry about it.
Yep.
But he changed the six footer in the, in the findings effect and I wouldn't worry about the building height.
Okay.
Okay. So once you guys don't go over, what, fifty feet? Let me just verify that just since this is on the record.
Okay. Conformance with the site plan approval criteria. After due review and consideration, the Arundel Planning Board has determined the application to be in conformance with the criteria of section ten point six point four of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance as follows. Number one, the proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in sections five, nine, and 10 of this ordinance. Number two, the proposed project has received all driveway and highway access permits and appropriate waivers from MDOT for the purpose used to, for the proposed use to be serviced by Alfred Road Route 111 and has received a drainage easement from the main department of transportation to discharge runoff into the existing Alfred Road drainage system. Number three, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and the neighborhood. Number four, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. Number five, the proposed project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce minimal additional peak runoff from the site during a 25 year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. Number six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite and offsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environs or the community. Number eight, the proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction or other nuisances that will adversely that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding properties. Number nine, the proposed project will have a positive fiscal impact on municipal government. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the above findings and conclusions, the Arundel Planning Board hereby approves the plenary site plan application of Lester Williams to construct an auto repair and sales facility consisting of a twenty-four hundred square foot building and twenty-five space parking lot on a point eight acre lot containing a single-family home at six-six-zero Alfred Road Tax Map four Lot Thirty-nine in the Alfred Road Business District subject to the following conditions. Number one, the applicant shall submit a performance surety in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred ninety-five dollars in compliance with Land Use Ordinance Section ten point seven prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number two, no building permit may be issued until the applicant submits to the town planner and the code enforcement officer a copy of the corrective deed recorded in New York County Registry documenting the property at six-six-zero Alfred Road has a lot area of seven point eight nine acres. Number three, all soil erosion control devices shall be installed prior to the commencement of site work and no site work shall be shut down for the winter until all required soil stabilization mechanisms prescribed herein are made effective. Number four, no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the codes enforcement officer receives a certification from the design landscape architect and engineer that all improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved plans so approved by the Arundel Planning Board this fifth day of January two thousand twenty-one. I need a motion at a second.
Um, could I make a, like, there are two comments. Um, we only have a twenty-one space parking lot, not a twenty-five.
Oh, okay.
And, and then, um, on number two, under conformance, we've, what we've received from DOT is a drainage agreement, uh, not an actual easement, but we have an agreement.
I thought it was an easement.
No, uh, no, it's a, it's a, they called it connection agreement.
Do you have to record that?
Uh, yes, we do.
Oh, so it's basically, it's like an easement, isn't it?
Yes, it's allowing us to connect our stormwater pipe to their, to their ditch.
Right. All right, we'll call it, we'll call it an agreement then.
So I only have one change, one word I think we should change, Tad, in item number three at the beginning where it says that the lot was expanded. I think we should say corrected or, you know, because it really wasn't technically expanded. It was just, uh, miswritten, correct?
Yeah, the legal description was corrected.
Right, the legal description was corrected as opposed to expanded, which gives, implies that it actually got bigger. Which it didn't.
I was gonna say it's misidentified. How's that as? Lot thirty-nine is legally nonconforming, well, misidentified.
Misdescribed.
Misdescribed legally, yeah, or whatever Yan said.
Bribed as point three-nine acres that will be corrected, legally corrected to
point seven, eight, nine.
Now, that will be corrected, just put corrected after the filing of a corrective deed.
No, you should, you should say that it's being legally corrected to the point seven, eight, nine.
All right, we look corrected, absolutely. Okay, fine.
Yeah, I think what Yan said was exactly, um, pretty concise.
Yep.
And that's sanctioned, that is sanctioned by the probate court. That's what Peter was telling us. Peter and Les told us it was sanctioned by the probate court. All right. So that meet with everybody's satisfaction?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is, we can make changes here on the computer and I can print it out for you guys.
It's no more onion skin.
When you, Tad, when you get it finished, send it, send it over to me and I'll load it up into DocuSign and we'll send it out.
Okay.
Okay.
I make a motion we approve with the. Motion was made by Rogers, seconded by Jens to approve the application as corrected. Any, any other discussion? Hearing none. Roger?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Jens?
Aye.
I would ask Marty, but Marty seems to have disappeared. He's, he's gotta have a bad connection somehow. So it will be four in favor with one abstention. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciate it.
All right. Um, sending it to you right now, Rich.
Okay. And I'll, I'll get it out after the meeting to everybody else for signature.
Still couldn't remember.
The next item. A Rundle's Keep Preliminary Subdivision Application Determination of Completeness of Proposed Cluster Subdivision Containing Nine Lots Serviced in Part by a five hundred and fifty-foot road called First Lightway located on a fifty-eight point zero-three acre parcel Tax Map nineteen Lot Eight located at one-five-zero Irving Road in the Rural Conservation District and Resource Protection District. A Rundle's Keep LLC is the owner and applicant and Jason Baffieti, Baffieti's PE of Atlantic Resource Consultants is the applicant's agent. Okay. So we asked, we, we, we did the sidewalk, we went out, we looked at it. Jason has given us another proposal. Uh, if you remember at the sidewalk, Jamie had suggested that there'd be a connector road in the back to tie all of the properties together. We were given.
Let me hop in, Rich, or you want to keep going?
Yeah, no, go ahead, hop in, Jason. I gotta, while you do that, I'm gonna call up the second map.
Yeah, and I have them both on my computer now. I can share if you want, you want me to do that, but.
Yeah, if you could do that, that would work well.
Yep, let me see if it works. Uh, no, you did, I'm disabled by the host, so. One, I'll email them to you while, while I'm talking.
Well, they already have it. They've been emailed.
I, I have the email. That's what I was trying to open up.
But I, I'm pretty good with words. Maybe I can create a little picture. So, uh, if you, if you remember, you know, so we did the sidewalk and I laid out the first two houses on the right as you would come in for the, uh, for, for the first submission. Which, Tad's correct, you know, those, those, those lots, you know, in the middle of Portland would not be very tight at all, but you know, we're in a rural neighborhood, so you have limited areas where you can put your house, your septic system and get a well in. However, each lot does pass the state minimum standard for, for, for those items. So, so Tad and I were talking and, and I think this came from a suggestion from Jamie, uh, that if there was a way to somehow decompress the development instead of having a road with a cul-de-sac with most of the houses around it, spread the, the development out over the entire area that we could use, because those are all pretty good soils. So that would be sort of the hand, hand drawn slash color drawing that was sent out to the rest of you. Uh, and when we do that, we're gonna drop a lot uh, and then we're gonna have four shared driveways. Uh, each shared driveway for six of the lots would run between, on the lot line. Uh, and then for two of the lots to access the back of the property further to the northeast, those, those lots would be, or is that northwest? I get confused. Uh, those lots are a little further back in, so there'd be a long gravel driveway of about four hundred feet that would access two lots that are sort of in the back. Um, I personally like the eight lot version better as far as a designer. Um, I I think that it's, 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 it's more marketable, but the other thing, it really does sort of spread the development load on, on all the good soils. In that trade-off, you know, losing a lot actually isn't that big of a loss because, you know, there's a lot of money that would go into a road. And so it's, it's, it's roughly at two hundred, at two hundred dollars a linear foot, which is what it costs to build a, a road these days uh, without utilities. I think that's a pretty fair trade-off. So I think the real question goes to the board and you know, and I talk a lot about this discretion thing, is there a version you guys like better? Because we're open to both. Although my, my personal preference is the eight lots, but I'm curious to get everyone else's thoughts.
Well, I like this much better than what we were looking at when we did the sidewalk.
It, it, it breathes better.
It's much more elegant in terms of the way it sets up and the lots are more private. I, I think it's much better, Jason. Design-wise.
Just so you know, it, it kind of goes against the intent of your ordinance or, or the intent of what cluster development really is, but you know, Tad and I have some opinions on that and, and I, I like a cluster, but sometimes it's almost too much cluster. So I, I, I do, I, I, words, I, I think that's right.
Well, you're using Irving Road almost as if you're, as you're, you're clustering off of Irving Road, so I guess, but I think it's much better than when you have the cul-de-sac. The, the circle.
Yeah, see, I'm not, I'm not sure if I agree with that. Uh, I had problems with the cul-de-sac coming off Irving, Irving Road in that a couple of those lots weren't even an acre in size. And, and that troubled me. Yeah, I know, I know that the clustered sub, the, the development allows it, but it's kind of hard to have an acre of land and have any kind of outdoor space around there. The problem I have with the new design is that how do we get, how do you guarantee that people are not going to start cutting into that fifty-foot buffer in front of them going to Irving Road?
Well, we certainly could. We could make that open space. I mean, it, if you're willing to, to sort of, uh, if, if we can kind of bargain, if I can change the setback on, on, because you, you, under the cluster ordinance, you have the ability to make setbacks whenever you want. I'll give you the fifty-foot strip as, as not part of the lots as open space, but just give me a five-foot setback from that front lot line so that people can clear trees and no one's gonna put a house right up there, but it does give a sort of a bigger envelope to, to, to have a yard and, and, and do those things. Which I think if you, if you go back and look at that plan, that's kind of what I showed. I showed a five-foot setback off the fifty-foot buffer. And so if you, if you imagine that fifty-foot wooded buffer as a lot line, then we just leave the thirty-foot holes in it for the driveways. Um, so it'd be sort of like a piece of open space with, with access easements through them. Their, their property line pins would be where the open space starts so that their, their deed would, would show that they don't own that land.
Jason, how deep is the buffer?
Fifty feet.
That's wide, right? It's fifty feet deep off of Irving Road?
Yeah, that's pretty, that's pretty wide for, for a buffer and, you know, once anything over thirty feet's usually pretty good. To get within thirty feet, that's the, the maturity of those trees, it, it's kind of, you don't get that many trees lined up, but with fifty feet, you'll get, you get a pretty good buffer through there.
I was just confused by the arrows because the fifty feet is in the middle and the arrows are going horizontally, not vertically. You know, you can do it for a while or whatever.
Yes.
So the other way to accomplish this would be, uh, I mean, I, I agree with Sue. I, I like this presentation better too. Uh, and I think that, uh, uh, Jason's, uh, further suggestion that he just mentioned is would, would be, would be fine too. Seems to me, uh, another way to accomplish this would be with, uh, rather than making that, uh, common space would be simply to write in, um, uh, deed restrictions with respect to the uh, permissible cutting.
Yeah, so, uh, sorry, I don't mean to bump in, Jens, but there is another thing that we do. Um, it's a little more expensive. But we actually take, uh, four-by-four pressure-treated posts, if you can find any now, um, and we bias cut them in the middle. And then, so Logan actually does this, uh, and he actually puts a sign up and we can do it every thirty feet that basically say, uh, wooded buffer, no cutting. It's almost like a fence, but, but without, you don't connect the post, but, um, we actually, the town of Scarborough makes us do that quite a bit when we have wetlands that, 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 on wetland buffers that you're allowed to cut. And they, they don't look terrible when they're out there and it, it's a something visual that, you know, when a homeowner's out there in two years and they buy the lot and they go up there, they notice it and then they at least ask themselves the question. Restrictions, sometimes it's, it's like, yeah, well, it's in there, but how many people read their deeds, you know, really?
Yeah, that sounds in, interesting.
That is interesting. Um, through the chair?
Yes.
I, you know, I, I love the concept of, you know, that, that becoming open space that's owned by the association. The only problem is if we do that, then there, these lots have no frontage. And as you know, the ordinance says thou shalt not have a lot that does not have frontage on a town road. And so I, I think Jason's suggestion is an interesting one. The other thing to do is it could be, they could own it, but there'd be a conservation easement on it. Fifty-foot conservation easement. They own the land, but there's that conservation easement.
That sounds like a great idea.
Yeah.
Well, and, and, and that, I mean, then the conservation easement Tad, because I've seen these before too. We've got to give the town some teeth to enforce, enforce it. And so with that is, you know, whether there has to be, uh, you know, I don't want to commit the, the developer's money to putting a lot in escrow, but whether there's, there's some sort of mechanism by which if someone takes down a tree, they have to plant one back, you know, so. Else we're dealing with this. Yeah. Well, you know, it's interesting because Kenabunk Port, um, Conservation Trust, um, enforces their conservation easements with zeal. Let's put it that way. So much so that I've had property owners actually terrified to actually mow an area that there's a conservation easement and they've called me up and said, do you know what they're gonna do? Don't ask me, and that's in a Rundle. Don't ask me. Um, there's no way to get out of that and, and, uh, I would call them and don't call me. But they would, but they said, well, they, they don't allow that. And so whether or not ACT would do that, I don't think the Arundel Conservation Trust would be interested in it. They might. Yeah, they might be interested in a conservation easement that preserves a, a section of wooded road in the town. I, I don't know, but if the town, if you were to give that to the town, let's say. It does connect to the back, so the, the back, you know, the back, what, what I call the back forty, it's more than forty. It's also open space. I mean, I could just assume that that goes, there, there's a lot more open space, I think, to be had back there that's gonna all connect to that. Just having looked at pretty much every piece of property in Arundel by now. So where, where, I mean, there is, there is access from Irving Road to the larger parcel of open space, so I'm, and that might be an interesting trade-off. They'd say, yeah, we'll maintain your fifty-foot buffer because we've got, you know, this forty acres right here, so. Well, you know, the open, the comment here, and this is interesting because if, if we have the, that would connect to the, the rest of the wetland area there too. Yeah. And, and the, the rest of your lot. Now, either the in that situation, that could provide ACT with access to a large wetland complex. Yeah. And they would have the ability to enforce that and what would be very interesting would be they, that would also take pressure off the homeowners. Because then the homeowners don't have to pay for, um, usually when Beth makes an assessment on common open space, she takes a value of that open space, which is, you know, like a thousand bucks an acre or something.
Yeah.
And then, then divides that up and assigns a piece of, a proportional piece to each landowner or to each member of the association. If there's no association out there, because the association's usually driven by a road, a conservation easement administered by a local land trust that has access to the.
Administered by a local land trust that has access to the back land would reduce the property, individual property taxes. Not tremendous amount, but significant, slightly for the, uh, for the, uh, property owner. And also sure there would be, uh, it would be enforced if there were any encro- encroachments on it. And so that might be something that we should explore. If you, if the board decides to go with this and the applicant decides to go with this. These ways of, of enforcing these, these buffers, um, should be explored. And we might be able to come up with some creative solutions.
So if we make the 50 foot buffer, um, a conservation buffer, but. Part of the lot which gives them access to Irving frontage on Irving Road, that would solve the problem, right? I like that solution.
Gives them ownership of the land. I mean, it's going to be better for marketing and, and just keeping, you know. Uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Stewardship of the land. Yeah, it's better.
I like that. I, that works for me. And I think it's a good plan for the land.
Through the chair?
Yeah, Marty.
Would that be Kenny among Port Trust or would that be the Arundel?
It would be, it would be ACT. It would be the Arundel.
I'm just trying to clarify as a thought.
Well, I, I, I would think, uh, it would be ACT because it, it about port is. Is, um, likes huge, you know, larger pieces of property. This is not insignificant, but ACT is, is, uh, very interested in trying to, uh, connect to some of these, um. Large open space areas to create trails and connectivity for wildlife migration. And this is, this is a perfect opportunity for them to start looking at that. As you know, we're talking to Walter Woods about Oak Ridge Terrace.
But that also would make them more. Known and accessible.
Well, uh, the absolutely true. And the, the, the thing is they're very, they're very, uh. I mean, we, this is what, the second time we've dealt with, the third time, this would be the third time we've dealt with them in, in some of their endeavors. And they have a lot of community support and they have a great group of volunteers that are very motivated. Uh, and committed and, uh, I'd be, I'd be happy to reach out to them if Jason would like me to. Or the board would like me to and talk to them about this potential.
Yeah, yeah, Ted, I'm, I'm fine with that. If you just want to copy me on it and then, you know.
I will. Yeah, I'll copy on. Absolutely. But I need, I would need permission from, from the applicant to, to begin to address them. And the applicant's not going to do that until he knows whether or not the planning board is married to this or to the other, the other.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're kind of, I actually did complete the items that were missing, but. And I was ready to submit two weeks ago or whatever, but then I was like, well, but if we go this way, then this isn't right. So I, I figured let's just pause for two weeks and get your input first and then, then I'll be, I'll redo everything. On what you tell me you're gonna, you, you want to see.
So the board, it's up to the board here. How do you want to proceed?
I think it's a good plan.
I, I like, I like it with, with the conservation easement. I like that better than I do the first plan.
Okay.
Yeah, because.
Agreed.
My, my whole problem with, uh, without the conservation easement is, you know. I'm really, I'm just going to clear those trees right down to the road because I just want a big front yard.
Yeah, and that's something we're going to be discussing at our next Tuesday is that issue of how do we actually in, start enforcing. Enforcing those provisions, this 58, 50 foot setback is something that's been around for a long time. It's been codified, I, I, again, in, um. Reinforced by the, uh, 2016 complaint in the complaint committee and they're very adamant about, about these, these kinds of measures. And, and, uh, so it's, this does a very good job of, of, of addressing that issue. We're going to have to do this, also look at doing this for non subdivision situations as well. And that's where we're really going to have some interesting, interesting, uh, workshops. Selling this to, to the townspeople.
I do believe you're correct. So I guess I need a motion from you guys as to which way you want to go with, with the first one or the second one.
Well, I think we, I think the, uh. Strong consensus was with the second one.
It seems to be yes.
Well, yeah, uh. Marty, I think everyone's, uh, had that opinion and I, I don't know if Marty even cares.
With the conservation.
Yeah.
Well, how about a poll, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Susan, are you in favor of it?
I am. The second version with the conservation buffer.
Roger?
Yes.
Marty?
Yay.
Jens?
Version two with the, uh, ownership to Irving Road, subject to a conservation easement.
Yes.
Yep, absolutely.
That's all I need.
All right.
Thanks, Jason.
I'm going to stay on for the rest of the discussion just for kicks, so.
Okay.
Wow.
So the next one.
Get a hobby.
He's got a hobby. He, he lurks and stalks.
I haunt planning boards across the state.
I've heard that. I saw you up in Addison.
Okay, so both of these, I'm, I'm going to take these out of order because Mr. Lavanti wants to. Have some input on the, the, uh, residential growth ordinance. Discussion. And I. We're going to have to make some kind of a decision. We don't have to make that decision tonight. We can get the discussion started. It is on the agenda for the workshop next week as well.
And the board, the, just, just, uh, as a recapitulation, the, the board basically voted at the last meeting. To, uh, to proceed with 40, the 40 permit, not to change the 40 permit cap. That. Or did we? I don't know if we actually.
I agree.
I don't, I don't think we have voted on it.
Want to do because that's, that's something we want to take to town meetings so that that would be the fir- regardless of what happens. In any further deliberations on changing this, this ordinance. The first thing we need, the first statutory requirement we have is determine whether or not the cap should be decreased, increased or, or kept the same. And the consensus of the board basically was keep it the same. The question for the board, for the chairman would, would be, do you want to make a vote on that, on that cap this particular time in case the selectmen? Ask, or should we wait till, till we review the rest of the ordinance?
Oh. Well, I, I, I think the, you know, when, when we look at the rest of the ordinance and the rest of the growth ordinance, it's a question. More from a development point of view, uh, from, from, uh, elderly housing. Uh, or from multifamily units. In terms of how that, how this would be impacted. Right now, we know how it's impacted.
Yeah.
You can, you can, Walter Woods is a, is a great example, not that he's doing elderly housing or that he's doing. Multifamily units. But any developer that comes into town is only going to get six permits a year.
At the most.
At, at the most.
So point of, uh, reference, Rich, didn't we discuss separating single family home permits? From, uh, senior living and elderly housing or over 55? And elderly housing and multifamily?
We did, and we'll be discussing that more next week.
Okay.
Ri- right now, what, what we have to look at is. If, if, if we leave it at 40, you know. Depending on what we do at some other point. That, uh, we can leave it, it, we, we could say next week, we could work up something on multifamily and on. Age restricted communities completely separate from the growth ordinance. Or we could factor them into the growth ordinance and instead of having 40, we could have 100. You know, this, there's, there's any number of ways that it can go, but it, it'll be an interesting discussion and it'll take, take a little bit of time. To work through i- in terms of how we go about doing it, or do we leave it the way it is right now? And we have the 40 permits in there. And. There, there are a couple of changes that we have to make to it because we have to get rid of the point system that is generated. Uh, in the current ordinance because our town attorney has said, I know you can't do that. That's.
That's going to be an issue and, you know, we shouldn't assume that that's an automatic. I, I, I think that, that we talked about it last time, that's a real question. Whenever you put a residency requirement on something like a building permit. Or any kind of, let's say you had a residency requirement on, uh, subdivision permits. That in, in order, first in the queue, or we're only going to give out 10 permits this year and, and you have to be a resident. If you're a resident, you go to the head of line, there's a real question of equal protection to the law. And the, this kind of preference has been, uh. I think Jens will, will, will pretty much back that up. That's been frowned upon by the court system. The town attorney is not happy with that. Uh, she, she thinks that we should do something to reduce the, uh. The point system preference for residents, depending on how long they've lived here, if not get rid of it altogether. And which brings up the flip side, which is, and which will get a lot of pushback from longtime residents here is. And basically if a developer were to come in, let's say his son were to come in with, uh, with their, their project at Bartlett Farms. And it was all, all the infrastructure was done and they were all prepared to start, start selling lots. They could potentially, especially if they start, you know, dividing out the, the properties to different entities. Other than themselves, uh, they could command all of those 40 lots, all of those 40 permits in one year. That's the real concern here is, uh. Is that the townspeople, those, you have developers and we're getting a lot of development pressure and then you have individual homeowners, individual lot owners. Question is, um, how do we do this so that there's fair distribution of, of permits? Um, so that everybody gets a slice of that limited pie.
The president paying taxes in the town of Arundel, so they should have some preference.
I agree, but we do want growth. I wonder about a, an arrangement where any, any particular developer would be limited to. A certain percentage of permits. We have to couch that carefully. To include affiliates.
That's always a hard one. You can always, you can always create another LLC.
Right. Well, that, and then you'd have to, you know, we have to have some insight on, on, you know, the, the controlling entity.
Or what about contractors also? I mean, there are some contractors that have like 15 projects going all over the place. Um, so I think it's, it's very hard to police. That maybe the most equitable thing is to limit the 40 permits to single family houses. And deal with those other segments separately.
That's interesting.
It's, it's an interesting, hang on just for a second. Jason, you had a comment?
Yeah, so I'm, uh, Jason Lavanti Home Innovation. So we do about 50 houses a year, so. Um, so recently I pulled a permit back in November, uh, bought a parcel of land off the old Limerick Road. Um, I have a customer that I'm building a house for, been a resident for five years in Arundel. Um, excited, wanted, you know, young couple, they want to build a house in Arundel. It's where they grew up, it's where they want to be. Now, I don't even know if I'm going to get a permit in January. You know, so I'm looking at your point system and it says, well, if the applicant, you know, has been a resident for a town of Arundel. Well, my customer's been a resident, but I haven't. You know, so I apply for this permit, I find out there's a growth permit now, because I mean, I've built houses in Arundel in the past. Um, hasn't been an issue until, you know, now all of a sudden there's a surge of building. Uh, and now it's starting to trigger your growth permits, uh, which is understandable. Um, so I've got a customer, so just so you guys understand, so as a builder. Our processes are typically, you know, when we're building for our customers, you know, we require a commitment letter from the bank. You know, which requires an appraisal done on paper. So basically they say, hey, you build this house on that property, it's worth X amount. Um, so it's kind of appraisal before we build. So this way here, there's no skeletons in the closet, um, when the house is complete. Now, these appraisals cost 600 bucks. You know, my customers have to pay for that upfront with the banks. You know, then we apply for a permit and now here we are, you know, 60 days. Now I gotta wait to the end of January, now you're pushing 90. These appraisals are only good for six months, so I gotta build this house and close within a six month period or we have to reorder another appraisal. So now my customer that's a resident of Arundel, which according to your guys' list and the whole reasoning for this. Is that the residents should be put up first. Well, I have a customer that's not being put up for us, that is a resident for the past five years in Arundel. And now he's looking at having to order another appraisal at some point within the next couple of months. Cause there's no way we're going to have the house done within a six month timeframe when I can't even get a building permit for three months. Um, so this is an issue, you know, especially when you got first time home buyers, $600 is a lot of money. Um. And the town of Arundel is creating these issues that they're not aware of and I want you guys to be aware of. And I want you to bounce ideas off me because this is what I do for a living and I can tell you the repercussions. Of the decisions that you guys are going to make. Um, personally as a builder, you know, we're not, we can't sit there and say, well, I don't know if I want to start this house in next month or three months. Um, people are planning their lives, you know, they, they already know they gotta wait four or five months of a house built. And now we don't know if we have to add three or four or five months, whether or not we're going to get a building permit. So. This is kind of, this point system clearly just doesn't work. Um, I'm reading through it and I'm trying to understand it and I understand you guys have growth permits. You want to be careful how many kids you're increasing in the school system. Um, you know, to me, doing the elderly's, elderly communities and not limiting to them makes sense. You know, you're not adding more kids into the school system. Why not? That's not going to be a burden on the town of Arundel. Um, the kids going into the school system is your biggest concern. You don't want to overgrow your school system. Um, you know, with a short amount of taxes that you're just going to gain within a year or two. Um, so I understand that these, these limitation of permits should be based on families. Probably not 55 year old plus communities. Um, so to answer your previous discussion. Um, I can, I, I would say that's a great idea. I don't see how that would impact if we free up a lot of the permits on that scale. Uh, but this point system, I just don't see, it, it just clearly doesn't work. Um, I, if it was me, if I was you guys, because I got a lady from Florida. That bought a piece of land that was in a subdivision that just applied a couple of weeks ago and got pushed in front of me. And now she's going to build a house. She's not even in Rosal, resident in Arundel, she's not even in the state. You know, so now I get this Florida resident, they got a permit before my customer that's an Arundel resident. So that just goes to show you how this point system clearly isn't working the way you guys were hoping it was going to. Personally, if it was me, I would get rid of this whole point system completely, first come, first served. You know, it just doesn't make any sense. No matter what point system you're going to come up with, there's always going to be some loophole. That's going to favor one person over another and that's just not fair for anybody. Um, you know, if you guys have only unlimited three or four permits a month. Um, and we know that going forward, but it's first come, first served and there's only a couple of guys in front of me. At least I can plan and say, hey, we're not going to get one this month, but. There's only one other person in front of me and I know I can get one next month. We can plan on that. We can order appraisals accordingly to that. And there's no mistake and we're definitely going to have a permit, but leaving people hanging on a line, that's just. Uh, that just doesn't make any sense for anybody. It's going to create serious frustration and it's going to cost a lot of people, a lot of money. A different avenues, different ways.
Well, I think that's, I think that's where our, the town attorney was coming from when she said that it was, it wasn't equitable. We, we, we have created. A system that, that, you know. Yes, Jens?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I hear what Jason's saying and I think we should be cognizant of that. What I'm a little concerned about here is the suggestion that, you know, it's, oh, the, the town has got to be sort of last in the considerations. Of, of all this stuff that involves multiple entities, including banks. And we've got to look out for the town's interests and not march to the tune of what banks are doing or their requirements. And all the stuff that goes with that, including the timing and longevity, uh, or, uh, longevity of appraisals. I mean, we can't, we can't be. I mean, we can't, we can't be, we can't be doing that. That doesn't make any sense for the, for the townspeople ultimately. So I, I don't think we can simply go on a first come, first served system for the reasons that we've earlier identified in our conversation. And that is because certain, certain players, you're with a lot more resources and can be grabbing up permits at a rate that would disserve people of the town of Arundel. It is a complex situation. I think we're gonna have to give it some, some, some serious thought. And I think the input that Jason's given is, is good and we should welcome that. But there is, there are a lot of moving parts. And, and, but I don't think we can be, I don't think we can be allowing ourselves to put commercial entities like banks who don't have any skin in the game here in the town of Arundel.
But you're gonna, you're gonna remember, not the bank that has the concern. It's the customers that, like, we have a commitment letter. The commitment letter is only good for so many months. You know, so then my customers have to reapply a whole new application that just took four to five weeks. It's not a pre-approval. It's a commitment letter. So they basically, you'll go through somebody's credit score, all their financing, their credit to debt ratios. So I can sign a contract with a customer and then I might not see a commitment letter for four to six weeks, depending on who the lender is. And they gotta, you know, they gotta do an appraisal on everything. So it, it, it's not the town's doing it for the bank. You're doing it for your customer.
No, that's, I, I, that's, I think you're misunderstanding my point. I mean, I don't think we can calibrate what our requirements are based on what the bank's requirements are. When they get to understand what is required for the building of residences in Arundel, then the banks will adjust their commitment letters and that kind of thing. I mean, who is, you know, we're gonna put the cart before the horse here. The banks will learn that.
The banks don't care. They don't.
Well, the banks do care. They wanna lend money. Believe me, they care.
They do, but they'll put the stipulation of a commitment letter has an expiration date. They couldn't care less how long it takes for you to build a house. So at that point, you're putting everybody at risk of saying, okay, we're gonna put up a $400,000 house. And if the commitment letter expires and then something changes with their credit because nine months has gone by, that creates a serious issue of, okay, now we have a $400,000 house that my buyer is no longer, no longer capable of buying, may or may not. You know, we're dealing with a pandemic right now where anything could change at any moment. You know, and extending this thing from a four month or five month build to a seventh or eighth month build, it just increases the risk of everything. I mean, we're always taking risk, but we wanna limit our risk as much as possible, not knowing what our end goal is, or what the end dates are. You know, so now we have a commitment letter. Most commitment letters expire in three to four months. And so we try to build and get those things done before that expiration comes through to make sure the security of our buyers and for us are there. So when we lose a month or two, it just pushes everything out. And now my buyers have to go back, renew commitment letters. And now with the timeframes I'm seeing right now, we have to renew appraisals, which now we're not only adding time, a lot of time, but we're also adding in money. You know, so now you've got the cost of my buyer redoing appraisals. You've got me sitting on a piece of land that I can't build on for X amount of months. So now it's costing me, you know, if I gotta pull money out of my line of credit to sit on this land, or I could be reinvesting that money in something else and I'm paying property taxes on this land that I can't do nothing with because you have a point system that's allowing some lady from Florida to build before my customer that's a resident of Arundel. So, yeah, I mean, it's, and I understand you're saying we can't do first come, first served. So Kurt Hisong's got, I don't know how many lots he sells left over there at Bartlett Farms, but I know I bought a few of them back five years ago. So I don't know where he's at with that right now. Yeah, he could possibly come in right now, according to your point system. He would outweigh every single person that would get on this list. So you're saying he could get all 40. Well, as of right now, he still can. Because you get three points for every year that you own a subdivision. Well, Kurt's, Kurt's on that for what, 15 years now? So that means he's got 45 points on every single lot available in there. He could overrule pretty much everybody that applies for a building permit tomorrow. So your concern is, is that Kurt can come in and get 40 building permits tomorrow? Well, he could do it today with your point system.
Well, I, 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 I'm not gonna get into, hang on, I'm not gonna get into the debate about whether or not he could do that. He could not do that because he's restricted by the number of permits he's allowed to pull on any particular month, regardless of the point system that accumulates to it. That's, that's an irrelevant issue. But if we were to go to a first come, first served, he could go in and pull all 40 permits. Our, our point right now is, is the, the discussion of, do we leave it at 40? Cause we're gonna have this discussion next week about how we go about moving it around. We, and, and this is part of what we have to look at. You bring valid points. I mean, there's no, there's no way somebody who lives in Florida should be able to come up to me and say, oh, I own land in Arundel and, you know, it's been in my family for a hundred years. So I should get preferential treatment. I won't argue that point. I, I agree with you that it's completely wrong. We didn't set this in motion. This, this particular land use or growth ordinance has been around for
43 years.
Since the company has a plan.
It's every three years and it's been around for at least 20.
No, it's been around for 43.
43 years. It's been around forever.
And then, and then, here's the irony. If I may, Mr. Chairman, here's the irony. The, the, the thing is, this is only the second time we've, we've, we've hit the 40, the 40 permit mark in that 43 years. You know, this is the only time. We actually hit the 35 back in the 2000s and bumped it up to 40. And since then, we have only hit 40 this year and it was just at the end of the year. Now, does that mean that the system is still good? No. The question is, how often do we go over 40 permits in the town of Arundel? And if we, if this is an aberration right now because of COVID or because of in migration, and we know this is a developing trend of in migration from, from other states, because of COVID or more, more because of the realization, you can be a lone eagle, work in a corporate office and still live in the, in, in, in a beautiful place like Maine and not have to commute. Because many corporations are discovering that, why are we paying for all this very expensive real estate? And when we can have our people work from home? Whether that continues or not is yet to be seen. But the simple fact is, we don't hit 40 very often. So the question is, if we don't hit 40 very often, do we really need a building cap in the town of Arundel? Are we really under that much pressure?
At least as a stopping point.
Yeah, but, but all it does is kick the can down the road.
Yeah, but we haven't kicked the can down the road. We haven't kicked the can down the road in that many times in 40 years. At least, but at least it gives us a stopping point instead of overloading our schools and everything else.
I think Paul's got a comment.
I think so.
Yeah, mute yourself, Paul.
Okay. Is the 40 a hard set stop or is it, can it be issued such as that 40 is a stop where you pause? Take a look at it and maybe for a year or two, you allow 50, but you do an evaluation at 40?
No, it's a hard.
It's a hard stop. What happens is by, by statute, every three years, we have to go back and do a, a, a mean average of how many permits we got. And then do an assessment of what, whether or not it went over. And there's a formula we use, which you can increase it by 5% or 10% or decrease it by 5 or 10% based on the moving average over that three year period. So you, we're required by law to, to, to examine that every, every three years. And we do have mechanisms for increasing it, but they're not, they're not automatic. They're, they're on a, on a three year basis, unless of course the SLIC one or the planning board said, we've got a crisis and then they, they can go in and change it again and have a, they have to have a legitimate reason for doing so. What the, what the three year average does is it gives them ammunition, statistical ammunition that justifies their decision to raise or lower. If they just do it arbitrarily, then they can get challenged in court.
Okay. All right. So it's, I understand you need it for planning purposes and then cost of schools and all that, but I mean, like you said, this year is an oddball year.
Yep.
What, you know, why wouldn't you be able to look at it and make a one-time waiver or something, a common sense type thing?
Well, you know, the, the question boils down to, and this is a question, I know there, there's some people, a, a lot of people who would ask this question, well, what's the point of having a, having a building cap? If you're gonna continually raise it? Sort of like Muammar Gaddafi saying, this is the line of death.
Yeah.
Okay, here comes the seventh fleet. Okay, here's the line of death.
Yeah, no, I get it.
That's, that's, I think that's really the issue. And it begs that question, Paul. It really begs the question. A, do we really need a building cap? Are we under that much pressure?
Be right there, Jason.
And are there alternatives to a building cap? Because, you know, frankly speaking, as, as Jason has demonstrated, he's not going away. His clients are gonna go away. You know, as soon as, as soon as the end of the month comes, he's in there applying and he'll be applying for another permit and he'll keep applying for permits. He's not gonna say, to heck with this, I'm gonna sell my land and, and, and go to, you know, to Waterboro. He's, he's basically saying, I'm gonna stick it out, but this is costing my clients and it's costing me costs. And it's hurting people. I understand that. But, you know, the, the issue is, do we even need this? And does this really accomplish what you wanna accomplish it when there are maybe other mechanisms one can use to control growth? One of which frankly speaking is the planning board. Planning board has the authority in the subdivision ordinance to be able to approve projects based in phases on how many permits can be issued. You can, you have that authority. You have a great deal of discretion at the planning board level, by the way. Now, I'd agree, that only deals with subdivisions and most of the, most of the lot creation in the last 10 years has been by splits and not by subdivisions. But now the pressure is sufficient that we're seeing more and more subdivisions. We have force pending subdivisions right now. And so that gives you an indication that we're done with splits. There's, there's more demand for more lots than a split of land every five years will produce. And so the planning board actually has some, some capability to do some restrictions on how, how that growth, how those growth permits, not growth permits, but how these lots are developed and you can make that a condition of approval. That's one mechanism. The other one of course is, is basically the, the other mechanism would be to use impact fees to offset those costs. You can have a school impact fee. You can have road, road impact fees are road specific and they have to be road specific. Which means, you know, and, and, and buyer impact fees recreational, there's, I think I gave you a list of 33 impact fees that, that people have out there. If you wanna do it that way.
Through the chair.
Worried about costs? That's how you.
Hang on, hang on for a minute, Marty. Jason's ahead of you.
All right. So first question is, you know, so this thing's been in place for 43 years. Okay, lots changed in 43 years. Now, you know, Waterboro and Wells and a lot of these other towns used to have growth permits. They, every single one of them got rid of them. I think you're probably, is probably one of the only towns left that still have them. But.
Don't forget, numbers are, they still have it.
First question is, I mean, of course, the whole purpose of the building permit is not to overgrow the school system. So, I mean, last year we did 41 permits. So literally it was one permit over the 40 cap, right? I've been waiting over two months because one permit went over. Now, the first thing though is that, why do you guys have a cap? Is there, you think a school system's gonna get overrun? Or is your school system built up where you can handle more? Because I know back probably about, I don't know, maybe five, six months ago is all one of your planning board meetings. And, you know, you guys are dealing with Thornton Academy, you guys are dealing with Kennebunk Schools, you guys have your own, your own, your own, not young school, but your own younger grade schools and stuff like that and everything. Now, as far as I know, you know, there's been a lot of like, you know, we're starting to lose our kids to the other schools and you guys wanted to keep the schools because obviously it takes a certain amount of kids to maintain a school system. So where are you guys at with your school system right now? Because if you're capping it and you need kids, then why are you capping it?
Uh, we're the only town in the, in the RSU unit that has, has growth, actually school age children growth. We're seeing decreases of that in Kennebunk, certainly in Kennebunkport. So Arundel is in fact, the only community that's growing right now in terms of school age children. Part of that is affordability issues. Part of that is the demographics of who comes here versus who goes to Kennebunk, who lives in Kennebunk and who lives in Kennebunkport. So that's among the RSU. That can change, of course. And if we have a growth cap that does stop development altogether, which I'm not sure we, we can do, but if we did that, yeah, that could hurt us. Or else if we change the demographic where we focus completely on elderly, I think Tom, Tom McGinn talked about this at one meeting where if we were to change our land use policy where we basically discourage single family development in favor of age restricted development or golf course development or something like that, which has a, a, a demographic that doesn't have a lot of kids that are generated, then yeah, we might be in jeopardy of, of not providing enough schoolchildren to keep those schools open. That, that could in fact occur, but I, I don't think we're at that point at this, this point. We're probably in better shape than the other two communities that we share a school system with. In terms of populating the school, at the same time, we don't wanna overpopulate the school because if we do, if we get too, too much ahead of the other ones, then the apportionments change and more taxes, more of the school costs, of course, will be levied on the, on the town of Arundel. So it's, it's kind of like a very delicate ballet we're playing with this issue.
Let's, let's not forget that the other side of, of, of the, when we look at building permits, there are only two groups of people that are going to need building permits. Either, either people who have kids that go into the school system or people that are over 60 who are gonna put a burden on the EMT system and the emergency response system for the medics. So it's, you know, we're gonna have one or the other. We're either gonna have kids in school, which is great. I love having kids in school. Of course, I was in EMT, so I also enjoyed having, having work to do as an EMT. It's, it's a tough call as to, as to what we're gonna be looking at. Do we need a growth ordinance? I think we need a growth ordinance because town meeting wants one. That's, to me, that's the, that's the rationale. We've tried to stop it before. We've, we tried a number of years ago to reduce the number and town meeting told us no.
Well, that's cause they didn't wanna stop development. I mean, it, when, when, when you guys, when the, when the stats show that you could actually statistically lower it to 28 units and you proposed that, and that was what, four years ago?
Four years ago, yeah.
Four years ago? They, they wanted to kill you.
You think, you think they wouldn't try?
And if it were 28 right now, Jason would pull the trigger.
Yeah. You, you know. You think if we, we go to them and say, let's eliminate the cap completely, they won't try to kill us?
If you just say that all we're gonna do is eliminate the cap and let everybody go crazy in town, yeah, they will. But if you come, if the planning board has a plan and, and that actually works, that will offset those costs or attract a greater demographic that doesn't cost as much. Like, very honestly, I never want a line, single family homes and, 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 and young families. Because that's, that's, that's the marrow of any community. But at the same time, if you, if you wanna offset some of those costs of supplying education for those kids and you start attracting different demographic like, like the 55 and older, which isn't the elderly, Jason.
Nice.
That, that was your chairman that said that.
Now, through the chair.
Unfortunately.
Yeah, go ahead, Marty.
Okay, that's all fine and dandy. But the fact is, if you're thinking of, of impact fees or anything else, we've thought of that many years ago and we have no support on it. So guess what? Whatever we talk about, unless we have some, some kind of support from our upper echelon, we're just spinning our wheels.
Absolutely true.
And guess what? And then, and then it comes back to blame us. I mean, simple and plain. If we don't have a support or thought of impact fees or anything else, which I'm not really in favor of, but the fact is, we've talked about sewer, we've talked about this, that and everything else. And if we have no support for any kind of infrastructure, even for your EMTs, for your senior housing or for your school system, it's gonna be buried onto the, to the, the town people. it's gonna be buried onto the, to the, the town people who are mostly a majority over 60 years old or anything else, who can hard, are fighting right now to keep up with their taxes.
Yep. I could tell you guys right now that there's a reason why Wells has the cheapest taxes.
Yeah, they get a lot of business.
No, it's not really so much that. It's, you know, they deal with a lot of seasonals, a lot of 55-plus communities. You know, I built a bunch of 55-plus communities down there. And when you put in, you know, whether it's 10 or 20 units and there's not one child going into a school system, you gotta really look at, you know, where you're spending the money. Where's the town spending the money? Okay? What is it like 50% of your guys' town money goes to the school system?
Seventy percent. It's 70%.
Seventy percent. So, you know, so when you start comparing and saying, well, you know, you do 55 plus, now we gotta have EMTs. Well, you know, it's a lot cheaper to have another EMT than it is to put a kid in a school system at about 11, $12,000 a year per kid, per year. So you've got a family of three, right? And, you know, and, and that lady's, I'm not gonna start judging with their own, but if, so if, if you've got a family, you know, three kids going into a school system, that's costing the town between 33, $36,000 a year for those three kids per year. I mean, you could have an EMT that could sit there and, you know, help out 300 senior citizens. I mean, and, and you're talking 60 senior citizens, not, you know, you gotta remember, the average house right now is getting expensive. I mean, materials going up, everything's going up, you know, so we're starting to see average households or average builds right around $400,000. You're not gonna get a 65-year-old person that can barely pay their taxes buying a $400,000 house right now. Right now, we're in an economy where you got second, third time home buyers that have saved up money. They're dropping 80, $90,000 deposit saying, yeah, I want you to build me a house. These are not people that can't pay the taxes. These are the people you want in your town today. You don't want to wait for a recession and say, oh, the only people that are buying are 21-year-old kids getting an RD loan with a half percent down and you know, as soon as something bad goes wrong and they're 21 years old, their chances are pretty high. Um, especially when they're only come up with a half a percent down, you're talking two, three grand, you know, to come up and they could buy a brand-new house. And that's what we were dealing with during the recession, that 90% of our customers couldn't even come up with $6,000 down. And the last five years, I got people dropping 80, $90,000, like, oh, 20%, no problem. He has a check. I mean, these are the people you want in your community today. You don't want to wait till the next recession and say, eh, we're only doing 20 houses and we're gonna get all the low-income people. Right now, you guys have an opportunity for people to come in building 400, $450,000 homes in your town, which is gonna pay really good taxes. And it's gonna really benefit your town and most people that are doing that right now are second and third time home buyers. They're not even families. Because most kids can't afford a 400, $450,000 house. Most of your first time home buyers right now are capped around the 375 mark. Anything over 375, we're getting people, you know, 50s, maybe, maybe upper 40s, but most people between upper 40s and 50s, and they're saying, hey, I want what I want and this is what I want to build. Now, here's a Rundle's opportunity to put in some really nice houses that are gonna pull in some really good taxes and their kids are already gone. You know, so it's like, you can't sit there and say, oh, you're either gonna have a family with kids or you're gonna have people sick and they're gonna be at the hospital every week. The people buying right now are the people you want. You know, so you're better off take the cap off right now, get these people in. And that's your biggest benefit. And one of you guys earlier said, hey, we want growth. And then a half an hour later, you're saying, no, we want to cap it. And like I said earlier, where is your school system at today? These rules were put in place 43 years ago when the kids were walking to school. You guys didn't even have school buses. Well, it's different today. So do you need more kids to keep your school system floating right now? Or not? These numbers need to be brought up, whether you guys do a study or whether you already know the numbers. You guys should be asking your district and saying, hey, where are you guys at? Should we be capping? Do you guys need more kids in the school system? You guys need to be working together. So your question earlier was, how do we go out to your selectmen and say, hey, this is what we should do? And they're gonna say, no, we don't want to. But if you say, hey, we gotta do this because our school system is, doesn't have enough kids to supply, to, to feed it, you know, to pay for all this, then they're gonna be like, wow, geez, it only makes sense. You have to sell it to them. So earlier you said, whatever we throw in front of them, you're just turning your wheels. No, you're not gonna turn your wheels. Come up with a plan with facts and put it in front of them and say, this is what we need to do. We need to do it now. And
Okay, guys.
One question to the chair.
Yeah, Marty, you're, you're the last comment.
All right. Thank you. Jason, you've given us a lot of good information there. But the fact is, on your houses and everything else, are you putting in asphalt turf and everything else? Which is not needed for the school systems or anything else along that way. But again, we are tied by our hands about a lot of different things because we do not have the support of some of the things. It has to come from the upper end first to give us the guidelines along the way. If we don't have impact fees or if we don't have any of this, the town people are gonna suffer. But the fact is, we've dealt with this so many times along the way and we get nowhere. Why are we blamed for everything?
Okay, so guys, we're, we're past our time. So I'm gonna call the meeting. We're gonna, we'll finish this discussion. Well, I don't know if we'll finish it, but we'll have this discussion again next week. And we're going to take the design suitability and land carrying capacity for factors in subdivisions into that meeting as well. Remember, it's, it's next Tuesday at seven o'clock. We're going to be having a workshop.
Okay, guys, thank you very much for including me. Um, like I said, I mean, I've got a ton of experience in this field on the opposite side. I have no problem with you guys bouncing ideas off of me. I work in several towns all the way from Saco all the way down to Wells. Um, so I see how they do things. Um, you know, I don't do a lot in Rundle and, and I go through this, don't really want to if this point system's gonna stay, but you know, bounce ideas off of me, you know, use my experience as, as a plus for you guys. Um, I basically joined this meeting. I'll probably have my permit by the time you guys figure this out. But I just feel bad that other people are gonna have to go through this process. I want you to know what I'm feeling. Even though I'm a major builder and I build in all towns and deal with various different rules. Um, and I know what works, what doesn't work. Um, so I'm basically stepping in saying, I, I wanna really help you guys out and say, look, this, this clearly doesn't want to work. And if you need ideas, bounce them off me, cause I could tell you, whatever idea you come up with, I can come up with the pros and cons of whatever ideas you come up with to help make you a better uniform decision for the end user.
Thank you very much, guys.
Maybe you'll come back and visit us next week.
I will. Send me a link.
Okay, you got it.
All right. Thank you, guys. Have a good one.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank
Have a good one, Paul. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Wait a minute, will you, somebody's gotta, gotta call the meeting, Mr. Chairman.
I need, I need a motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Do we have any more information from the planner? I mean,
What issue?
Anything you tell us. We're waiting to hear what updates so that we can know what our landmines are coming.
Right now, all the subdivisions we were talking about are pretty much on hold, although uh, as I told you before, Oak Ridge Terrace, uh, number two is before DEP. I've had some conversations with the applicant and he is gonna be coming back in uh, soon with Oak Ridge Terrace two and he's gonna have some tough, tough arguments to make with the planning board about, um, second means vgress. Uh, in terms of other subdivisions, what we have right now are uh, basically four. I don't have anything else on, on the line right now, although there may be uh, some stuff that'll be coming down in the next, this winter for a subdivision of multifamily units. The problem is that we didn't discuss in this is that according to our ordinance right now, a multifamily unit cannot exceed four units in a single building.
Wouldn't that be mu- multifamily still under that question?
Each multifamily unit, as we said before, is one growth permit.
Correct, but you still can have a multifamily as a condo.
Absolutely true, Marty. Uh, these are, these, I don't know whether this is gonna be condos or rentals. They haven't said exactly yet, but they're looking at, at, at doing a multiple, a multifamily project. That would be a cluster project. And uh, that's about all we've got going right now. Uh, in terms of what I've been, I've been talking to people about, it slowed down a little bit. It slowed down a lot from this, this fall and when, and early winter. But
COVID helps, you know?
Pardon?
COVID helps, slows down. But is this your new office that we're allowed to look at, which we have never seen before?
Oh, you mean the bunker? Yeah. Uh, actually, yeah, you guys are welcome to come in. I've told you that, Marty. You can come in and take a look at it. You can look through the Plexiglas.
That's what I mean.
No, we're not that secure, Marty. Trust me, we're not that secure. But we try to, we try, we try to do as many things as we can over the telephone or by Zoom, but uh, yeah, you can come in and take a look. Sure. Everybody's welcome to come in. Put on masks, we'll put you in Tyvek suits, you know, non-rebreathers. You'll be fine.
Germs don't grow on me.
I know, Marty. Actually, you're, you're, you're actually, I always wondered why you wouldn't be the, a donor for the vaccine.
Well, guess what? They don't allow us, senior citizens like us.
It's true that over, over 65, you can't donate.
Well, another lost opportunity, right?
That's right.
All right, I move, we adjourn.
There we go. Motion's been made to adjourn. It is a non-discussable motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
That is at
Night all and happy new year.
Susan, good luck with your tour.
Thank you. Tomorrow, dentists.
I apologize for getting kicked off, but internet went down on me again.
Yeah.
We missed you, Marty.
Yep. We're glad you were able to get back in.
Yep.
Night all.
All right. Have a good evening.